Kathy, would you take over? Arlene?
Here.
Isla?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
And Don?
Here.
Okay. So if we'll look at the at the public hearing notice, which is back there on one of the tables. It's posted for your convenience and your flag. We're here to do a pledge. So if you'll stand to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you should all have a copy of the minutes of the April meeting. So if you've had time to take a look at that. Mike? Consider any amendments that you might have or any questions you might have. And if not, then I would entertain a motion for approval. Nothing? Okay, then if you'd like to make a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we're approving the April meeting minutes by Arlene and seconded by Don. So Larry?
Yeah.
Don?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Isla?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to open a special hearing for the consideration of the conditional use permit applied for by Kelly Hodson and Wes Hodson number for the building of the under, for the over 55 housing unit.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Larry, seconded by Don. And what spoke by Don?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
And Larry.
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, we have some visitors, so I'm not sure what. Kelly, did you want to say anything or?
We'll approve.
Okay. And the gentleman in the middle back there, I don't know who you are.
Mr. Cooper.
Oh, hi Larry.
I think I'm on the agenda for later.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't recognize you. I thought some cowboy drifted in here and we didn't know where he came from. And Kim, did you have a statement to make on this?
No.
Okay. Anything, Aaron?
I think it's a great idea and if you open up potential housing in our community, I think we can just move forward with it.
Okay, any statements from any of the board members?
Is it just for over 55? That has been the history of these things. They, the people over 55 are better rakers. They're quiet, don't tear stuff up.
Way to like it there.
Yeah. You don't have to do that in favor.
That she's over 55 or that you let her in? Oh, okay.
Or that she's a vandal, one way.
Well, I think the purpose of over 55 is that the lawn service is taken care of and snow removal and people don't have to contend with that as they get older.
And also what Aaron said about just freeing up, it is a, it's a development thing. If we can free up some housing.
Quite a few have been asked for already here. It seems we've got three or four spoken for with really not a lot of effort to make a list, so.
You're just going to start with six of them at this time?
Six is all that will fit on there. If it would fill up, maybe we would do another one.
Okay, any more comments from the community? So can we just close the hearing or do we have to vote to close?
Well, maybe you leave it open for a while. It's kind of hard for people to come in, but they know it's a call and they question, so.
Right, and we probably had one of these and it showed up.
Well, it's open for another 20 minutes or so.
Okay, so if somebody comes in, they'll talk about, and then come back and talk about it. Okay, so we'll let that, we'll leave the public meeting open in case somebody wants to come in and talk or calls in or something. So the next thing on the agenda then is the financial statements. And you all have those in front of you. I think you have a chance to go through the claims. So any statements that anybody wants to make at this point or questions?
Well, I got a couple of questions on the financial statements.
Okay. And we're looking at the packet that says for the period ending 3/31, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I've been looking over. And I see in the water, I got a point in the first here. There's no wages involved with that, you know, the water.
Right, there's no wages expense to any of the proprietary funds at this time. We talked about that quite some time ago. We are paying all wages out of the general fund till we get a sum, a, to a place where we will reimburse the general fund from those areas in which the wages were earned.
So, so, you know, you're going to replace them every month or?
Yes, once, yes, once we get the payroll. When the QuickBooks account on payroll straightened out, we'll reimburse every month.
So right now, we're just going from October to March 2020 right now. And next time, it will be October through April. Is that what you were telling me until we get this thing straightened out? And then we're going to take it out of the general fund and pay these, pay the wages out of certain spots.
Well, the October through, the October through April is just a time period. That's, that you're saying that, that's from, that's the fiscal year. If you also have a month's statement in there?
Yes, I do.
So we can bring up anything we want to with the computer as far as the time period.
So in the, in the, in the month of March. In the month of March, you know, we look at, you know, on the general fund, we, we got a negative 5685 on a net income in the month of March now.
Okay, what page are you on?
The last page, the profit and loss of general fund for March of 2020.
Yep.
Now, we got a, we got a bills of, we got an income of, let me see. We got an income of that month for $28,503.46. And then we go down to the expenses and where expenses are $34,188.81.
What fund are you in? General fund?
General fund, yes.
The income on that is $122,000, about $21,000. Or whatever you said.
I'm looking at the profit and loss.
Okay, well, are you on the profit and loss by fund, general fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the month of March only? Not from?
Okay, October through March is where I am, okay? I thought you, that's where you were. Let's find March.
We got an income of $28,503.46 on the general.
Okay, wait till I get that, please, so that I can follow along. I'm in the special revenue nerves yet. We're at balance sheet, we're at October through March of the general funds. October through March, profit and loss by fund. Okay, March. Profit and loss by fund. The first page is special revenue funds, is that correct Larry? Because I need to see where you are.
This is what I called in for, let, and that is. This is what I, uh.
Well, that's not in our packet then, is that correct?
No, but it should be, the numbers should be in here in March. We got from October to March, we don't have a, a simple month that we can look and see where we're at.
Okay, this is not general funds, this is proprietary funds.
No. This one here is. There's general funds. And the one behind you is a general fund, there's a general fund too. Proprietary funds, yeah. You know, you know, I.
So why did you call in and get this?
Because I wanted to see what we're.
Okay Kathy, then you need to provide it to everybody else so we know what he's looking at.
Well, that's fine, you can check it around, look at it. But this, this don't help me all because we got a lot of vacant spots in here again, Cheryl. I can't understand why we got vacant spots in some of this stuff here. We can't figure out where we're at.
Now you're looking at the budget versus.
I'm just, I'm not, I'm looking at whatever we got in this whole, whole sheets.
Okay, if you will, please, go to the packet that has provided you for the meeting. And again, if he's going to get something special, that needs to go to everybody. We have, on the first page is reconciliation, let's walk through it. This reconciliation of the bank account. The beginning balance was 495 and change. There were $73,000 in checks, there was $91,000. I'm not reading all of the extra, you all got it correct.
I follow.
Then that means there are cleared out transactions. You have a cleared balance of $512,000. You have checks and payments, $11,000. Those have not been cleared, but that reduces that balance to 501. I think there was some question about outstanding balances. There it is, it's in the computers. The new transactions, there's checks and payments, 62 items, those also are not cleared. So you have an ending balance, this happens every month because you have things in between the balancing. On the balance sheet, there are assets and all of your bank accounts are listed. The accounts receivable are those water bills that have not yet been collected. You have other current assets and other funds. I see that that's a minus thing. And that could be anything from, what, water deposits to something that's in the books that's for some reason coming up with a negative balance, which I don't understand either at that point, because those are supposed to be assets. They should be a positive unless there's money owed against them or for some reason. Remember and keep in mind that we have been overhauling the books for a good year. So we're finding all kinds of things. The cash on hand with the county, some of these are very clear, some of them you won't know until you go in and open the account and go through line by line. The cash on hand with the county, we can get every month and that's what has been collected over there, but not paid to us yet. And the inventory of assets, we've been advised by Eddie that if it's anything under $1,000 to not even list it here. So that's one of those things that we will inventory differently as we get more into the books. We have the fixed assets of the land, the building and so forth. And there's where you come up with your million dollars in assets. The liabilities and equity isn't equal to your assets in any balance sheet. The accounts payable are $61,000. We have a little bit of $50 sitting in there that needs to be paid back on a shelter or a deposit of some kind. We have the water deposits that are sitting there that are accounts payable at the time that they become payable. Remember, if we have them a year with no late charges, they get them back. The accrued payroll liability are the federal income tax, the state income tax, the state unemployment compensation amount that goes into the state and it is also like Social Security and Medicare. Then those are, the Aflac is what we owe to insurance. Blue Cross Blue Shield, there's a minus there. They told us that it hadn't been paid since February. We sent them a check for $9,000 and sent it back. So we're still trying to figure out what's going on there. They bill this every month and we pay it, that's a liability. So the fact that we have a minus there says that we're still messed up with Blue Cross. The simple IRA is that 3% that the state, that the town pays to every employee if they meet all the requirements. And that's always based on their wages, so that's, that's a liability we need to pay. State withholding, again, SUI, that's state unemployment insurance. So all of that's payroll. Sales tax payable comes right off of the water sewer and garbage charges. We pay sales tax on that, it has to go to the state. So the other current liabilities, then, is total, or the total current liability is $11,000. And then you have, of course, those owed, the big ones, so that makes a total. That means that if you've got $72,000 in liabilities, you have equity which is free and clear. What amount is free and clear? So you follow that through. So if, your fund balances is what we, we clear the liabilities out and put them in our fund balance at the end of the year. So we have an operating fund, a police fund, special revenue funds, the streets, the parks and these will, you will find on your account balances as well. The lost funds of the sales tax funds, as you see, there's $58,000 in there and those are broken down with economic development, infrastructure and parks. That economic development, 3330, I don't know why it's still in there because Eddie supposedly closed it out at the end of the, um. No, he would have closed it out in February or should have been out of there by now. That, we'll just have to check it. That tip of $130, tip comes in and it goes back out. It is the money that is designated to us from the county that it is tip money and that it is paid out to that entity which earns that money. I don't know, as you see, the pool renovation is the one that's a seater. I'm just running through it to see the special revenue funds, that $74,000 is that, those funds which are designated for streets. So you get down to the debt service funds and you're going to have the Sharon Street assessments and, and the CD. You have enterprise and the utility funds, you've got water for $90,000, sewer for $220,000, sanitation for 301. We don't normally charge any wages to sanitation or have it in the past. So we basically break even on the garbage being picked up and so forth. We're not making anything on it. And that's one place that we probably could raise rates if we wanted to make something. Most of, if, if you remember last year and before we came in, there was 60,000, 60, about 60% of the wages was being charged to the sewer. The sewer was basically paying the wages. So, or 60%, so. But what we had was a breakout of $2 here and $4 there and $5 there and $20 here. And that all had to come back together and you couldn't follow anything. So we put everything into a payroll fund so that we could double check how the computer was handling the payroll. And I, Lisa and I finished up that some, this, just past week and she finished up some more this morning and I did not have the time to get, to get you a comparative, but I can send that out to you. But there's several items that has to happen. You have a gross wage, so you take, just for easy figure, in 20 times 20, 20 hours at $20 is $400, right? That employee gets paid IRA on that. That's, that's their retirement. Okay? But then, if they are, they are also eligible for the cafeteria plan. So the Blue Cross and the Colonial Life and all of that stuff, up to $500, gets to come off of that wage before you can start paying Social Security and, and federal taxes. But then you have to go back to that figure, or excuse me, after you take the IRA, or not the IRA, but the Colonial and all that out. None of that's taxed, but the IRA is taxed, Social Security and Medicare, but not withholding. So there's about three or four categories there. We found out during the audit that there is a cafeteria 125 plan, which we never knew was here. The cafeteria 125 is what excludes a lot of this from taxes. So I had to go back through one of our suppliers, who then went up two levels in his office, that found a copy of our 125 plan. So we're still working through that. And by leaving all of the payroll in one account, we can put somebody's wages in and set the computer to do all of the things it's supposed to do and hopefully it just does all the figuring and comes out with the balance that we have, of the, the net pay that we're going to pay. We have not, we find that yet and in trying to work with QuickBooks to double check that process, we were told they wouldn't talk to us because the primary administrator no longer works here. So we have had to go through that process.
Well, my question.
I need, before this meeting is over, I'm going to ask the council to vote to name me as the primary administrator so that we can get through that company and talk to them. We can't work with these people if they won't talk to us.
Okay. What I'm asking is, okay, we're taking the money out of the general fund for wages on the water, the sewer, the parks, the street, is that correct?
We will be taking a set amount.
But do you know, you know, from January 1st till today, how many hours we got on each?
Absolutely, it's in the, it's in the record, hang on.
So when we get a sheet like this, is there any way that you can put, okay, general fund, and then below it say sewer has this many wages come out, so we have.
No, because we haven't taken it out yet, Larry. We will when it gets out. When it gets out, we will just simply have general fund this much, sewer this much. Mr. McNally said that neatly, and, and I've talked to Bloomfield and I've talked to the town all the way around, you take, so, so let's say that the guys have 40 hours a week. So we take Boomer's wages and half of those are sewer and half of those are street. We take Patrick's and half of his is street and half of his is water. Okay? So each week or each pay period, those half and half of their hours. So let's go back to the $400, okay? So we're going to divide Larry's into two. So $200 is going to come out of water and $200 is going to come out of sewer. But we also need to take their costs in payroll wages. So we're going to have to expense the city's share of the Social Security, the city's share of the, of the Medicare, the city's share of the IRA, the city's share of the cafeteria. That will be a lump sum. And we've already set it up with Eddie so that it doesn't cause any problems, we just have to get to the figures. It's all a process where we then say a reimbursement to the general fund for wage expense out of sewer.
Is that going to be once a year that we do that?
No, every month.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Every month, yeah.
Are we getting close, getting to this, this problem?
Yes, that's what we're just talking about, yeah.
We're getting close to.
We have to be able to talk to QuickBooks to clarify everything. We have to be able to, you know, narrow it down.
Last month, we never, I never knew that there was any, I didn't talk to QuickBooks at all because.
We didn't either.
Okay. As long as we can get, talk to them, get this thing straightened out, so we.
Absolutely. We're taking it one day at a time because every day we run into another mess.
That's fine, as long as we're getting to the right direction and we're just not stagnating right on there, that's all.
Yeah, well, I don't think we are, I think we've made a lot of progress. The, um. I don't know what else on, on that page. The debt service funds, I think we've covered, the wa, there's your water sewer, see, we got a lot to. One of the things about the sewer, we raised the rates on the sewer because we knew the, the sewer point was going to be there. And then they started taking all the wages out of there. So it was down to almost zero.
Okay.
So, but, but that doesn't matter because we'll get it into the right funds. We want, we want to spend what the city makes and what the general fund is. But we also, I mean, they're available, let's put it that way, they're available. But we want to spend the restricted funds before we do the general funds. Because the restricted funds have to be spent in that restricted way. So we want to pay, for example, we want to spend those things that are restricted to streets. They need to be spent on streets. When we run out, we can use general funds.
Right.
But if we use the general funds and pay everything, we've got these restricted funds sitting there not used and then we're not going to get those from the state.
So when we get this, this little monkey off our back and get this thing straightened out, we should go and look at that sheet, see what we got for a balance in our general and see which each one of those are going to be, is that correct?
That's true.
Now, this lost one on this profit and loss by fund.
Okay.
That, is that the current number, this $21,000, or not, excuse me? This $35,760.42, is that the?
Is that on the very next page? Are you on October to March?
Yes.
And profit and loss by fund, general fund?
Nope. Profit and loss by fund.
Yeah? What's in parentheses, what's in parentheses on your sheet? General fund?
So economic development, you get 715208. Cities you get $21,458.26.
I'm not finding you, Larry. Okay, you've got profit and loss by fund. Is there anything in parentheses after it? No.
This is on what you gave me in the sheet.
Okay, here it is. So it's economic development, infrastructure and parks.
Right.
They all say lost.
Right.
Lost stands for local option sales tax.
Is that going to stay a fund that we can just kind of, that's where it's going to go and when do we distribute these into these, uh, infrastructure, economic development and parks?
I had, I had Eddie and Sonya set this up as an operating fund. That means the money that comes in goes into it, the money that goes out goes out of it. So we know exactly where it's spent. In the past, it has been a monthly transfer out of these funds into other funds and we couldn't trace it, that's why we don't know where the money is.
Just ask them.
I'm, well, I'm just telling. So notice that there is, since the fiscal year, and I'm not sure because at what time those closings were being done, Kathy could very tell you at what point we stopped doing the closings that transferred. But I thought that we had Eddie get those all straightened out at the end of the fiscal year, is that correct? They were checked, they were stopped at the end of fiscal year?
September was the last month of the close.
Yes, okay. So what we have here is from, is from September to?
October to current.
The first of October to current. So that's what has come in in our sales tax.
What I wanted to know.
Now, remember that the, um, the parks, the way the, um, the way the ballot read, that the people voted on, if, and I hold myself to this, that I said it exactly right. But if I remember correctly, it said for. for parks and recreation, for the improvement, or for the repair and replacement of the pool. I always read that, that although it said for parks and recreation, that it was basically for the pool, that was what, but, because it said parks on there, there was money spent in parks in the past, there was money spent, whatever, most notably, the big argument about paying lifeguards at the pool. So, the total of thirty-five thousand, those for the six months. Go on to the proprietary funds on the next page, and you have, there's your water, sewer, and sanitation. And you're right, and when you go to that second page, we're showing actually, I don't know why, let's see, sewer showing in the whole, I thought we had a whole bunch of money in there, whatever.
Is that that money we paid Kirkland Michaels, about that thirty-nine thousand, or whatever we paid there, does that show it?
But why are we showing a profit, some money on the balance sheet, not here?
I don't know.
We have sewer income of sixty-nine, let's see what goes against it. That contractual ninety-four, that probably is Kirkland Michaels.
That's that Kirkland Michaels we paid, right?
Yeah. And that was probably that big one last month, let's put that note down. But if you go back to that balance sheet, it shows we've got all kinds of money in there. So we'll have to do some checking. I sometimes question why that computer comes up different in different windows. Total expense, the hundred and three net ordinary income, so that shows in the hole. When we get everything on an even keel, I keep telling you, and I know you keep tired hearing it, but there's not a thing I can do till we get the computers where they are doing it right. I think the trial run Lisa ran today on the payroll showed a variance in there, sometimes up to twenty dollars on some of the withholdings, just because of the way they've been entered. So, and I'll do, I'll run them through by hand and see where we're right. If you go to the profit and loss by fund, special revenue, take a look at the street, and this is for March only. It'd be just the very next page.
Yeah, I got the special revenue, but you said look at the street, what's-
Well, the first one, the street special, and then-
Is it profit, loss?
Profit, loss by fund, special revenue fund, March twenty-first.
Yeah, I got that.
Ordinary income expenses, income. And the first entry is current property tax.
Right.
Okay? So if you have property tax going into the street fund, it's probably vehicle tax, is that correct, Kathy? Because you wouldn't have just general property tax going in there.
Yeah, the township, sure, will go into the street fund.
Okay.
As they pay their real estate, right?
And why the homestead allocation, why-
You're looking on that second page, those sixty-three-ten streets and bridges of twenty-two-eighty-two, is that what you're looking at, from the streets?
Well, I'm just running down just what all went in there, the profit and loss by fund. So you have street special, you have baseball, softball, and all that, we're getting rid of those, we just can't, I thought they were hidden, but we're trying to get rid of those old accounts, we don't put anything in them, there hasn't been anything in them for years. Let's take, if you want, let's go to the next page. See that economic development special account, and that's a minus, that's because it was transferred over into that other working account, probably. You shouldn't show a minus, though.
If you go through the proprietary fund, you have water, sewer, and sanitation, what sanitation?
Garbage.
Pardon?
Garbage. And we just pay, arts garbage, they do the work. Those are so hard to follow, that we need a different setup than that. I would like you to go to the profit and loss budget versus actual, that's what you were talking about, about the blank spots.
Right.
That other one was a one-month deal, and the rest of it follows the same pattern as you're targeting to follow, because it don't go across the page. Okay, so this is October to March again.
Yep.
The personal and real property taxes, current property taxes, the fifty-eight thousand is what we have collected.
Only a year we did it, right?
What else comes in all year long?
I meant, yes, I know that.
So the budget says that we are to get one-hundred-and-seventy-five ninety. Now, that minus doesn't mean we're over budget.
No, because we don't have all our cash on you.
Okay, so we've only collected thirty-three percent.
Yes, I know that.
Okay. So homestead electric, so the homestead allocation and motor vehicle pro rate both comes from the county. There's your lost revenue, we're forty-four percent collected. So overall taxes were at forty-four percent. Then you have your license implements, the use of money is interest earned, the rent and lease revenue, that's considerable, and I think a lot of people don't understand that, that's a considerable chunk of money. So you have, we need to separate it out better, I think, so that we have a better picture, because we have everything in there from a hundred dollars on this auditorium, to the cash rent on the property out there that they track farm, to the leases of the utility companies, where we get, and I think franchises and everything is strong.
So we don't put no budgets on that, you just said that interest, I mean, that rent and lease, we don't know what that is a year, that's gonna be, and we don't put a budget in there and see how much we got there?
Because I didn't go back to my individual figures that I used to make the budget, we took it off the budget, which is a two-page item like this. So that's taken off of that total. So if you look at forty-four hundred, intergovernmental, see that?
Yep.
Okay, they're all included in there. Because that's the figure that goes onto the budget.
You got other states receipted, forty-four, two ninety, you got a budget of a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and you got, I mean, what is that other state receipts, what's that consistent? On forty-four, two ninety is a number.
Four seventy, the four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand.
It's right below that highway allocations and all that stuff.
Highway allocation, highway incentive, motor vehicle, municipal equalization, other state receipts.
You got a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand budgeted, and we don't have no, I mean, what is that other state's receipt, what's that?
I can't tell you without going back to my paperwork.
All right. And it goes down to water revenue?
Okay, anything that has a zero in there, Larry, if you will come in and go through the paperwork that I used, because we lumped how many figures together, if you remember right, I had the table set up over there, and Kalina and I and Kathy all were pulling all kinds of these things out and adding them all together to get to these big figures, because when it goes to the state, we have a total of twenty-seven lines, but on the computer, we have how many hundreds. So they are condensed, there's no doubt about it. But I can't opt up my head, fill in every one of these, without having that paperwork in front of me. Okay?
Right.
So, intergovernmental basically says that we get this from the state, and the county, and the local. I will say this, that that highway allocation, which is, as you see, is budgeted at ninety-seven-thousand, then there's, and I can't remember what it was last year, but at the end of the year, I gave a report in September or October at a council meeting, and gave you all those figures, that, whatever that was, then you take a percentage of that, that's out of this local group, like the motor vehicle and so forth, and you add those together, and ours came to like a hundred-and-ten-thousand, or a hundred-and-twelve-thousand, or something like that. And that's what you have to spend on your streets, or you lose it. And we came within twelve dollars, I do remember that figure, but the rest of it, and that was just out of that group of restricted funds, so we spent it all, and then pulled twelve dollars out of the general fund. So then the next section is the charges for services, and there again, you have the water, the sewer, sanitation, and as you notice, there's something wrong with the reporting, because this sewer revenue shows we've got sixty-nine, and yet it shows in the hole on the window floor, so, you know, there's something, it's the way that we're pulling it off the computer, something. So you have the sales tax collection fees, you've got cemetery, you've got parks, you've got sale, you know, you've got all this miscellaneous little stuff. Don't see anything big there. I do wanna say down at the bottom, the other financing sources, see the transfers in? A hundred-and-two-thousand. That's probably a leftover from last year's budget, because the hundred-and-two, because the books were originally set up, so that every month, there were transfers from like the sales tax and so forth that went from here to here. Those were automatic, so you hit the closing out, and they transferred money. And we went through some hard days in there with Eddie and Sonya both, that said, we wanna know, we're not gonna have this, just transferring to another account, not know where it's gone. So at the time that I did the budget, that transfer figure was still in there. When I sent the budget in, I had no transfers. And the state called me, Deanne Hepner of the auditor's office in Lincoln called me and said, because you had that transfer figure in there last year, you have to deal with it. And I said, well, we're not gonna have any transfers, we just, whatever. She said, pull it out of general fund, take care of it, show that it's spent this year, and get rid of it. That's what that is. Okay?
Are you taking questions from other people that have the paperwork at the moment?
I don't want to, but I will. Make it short.
Well, so Larry's question about the zeros in the site over here, roughly accounts for six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars of income, do you have any idea what those categories are, like, because we haven't received any of those dollars yet?
They're whatever's listed there.
They're all just the others.
Pardon me?
They're all just others, and so it's like fifty percent of our income that's in another category.
Where's the other you're looking at?
Forty-four, two ninety, the forty-four thirty-nine, and the forty-four thirty-one. It accounts for like six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, it's half of our income. Do you know where, like, we haven't received any of that yet, do you know what that is or where it comes from?
I see an other local receipt and four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand.
Right.
Other state receipts?
The motor vehicle tax, the other local receipts, and the other state receipts. Those are all zero, we haven't received any of that yet. Do you know where that's coming from, or what that is?
We have received none of our state, our local taxes yet, we haven't got any of our property tax, but that shouldn't be there, that should be up above.
Okay.
So, no, I can't answer that.
Okay.
One of the things is that I take one step at a time and deal with one problem at a time, so right now, we're in good shape as far as what we're paying, you know, so when we get to this long-range other-
I was just making, like, wondering if you're sure it's actually going to show up at some point, because it's fifty percent of the income, and if I'm doing the math right, we're already over budgeted-
There's a good, well, there's a good share of them.
Three hundred thousand.
It looks to me like there could be assessments on Sharon Street, because they're not in there anywhere.
Oh, okay, okay. So, but money that, I mean, it's, you know what it is, it just hasn't shown up.
Yeah, I just haven't paid it, yeah. It's probably on our worksheet, but went into a total. And as I glanced at that, said, yeah, yeah, Sharon Street's not there, so, that's a big part of it.
So you don't have to pay it?
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, you should have paid it a month ago.
You can put that in the paper.
Okay, so that kinda puts us where? The government activities expense, as you notice, there's a whole lot of blind ones there, Larry. And notice that we didn't budget specifically for the IRAs and that, because that was, we broke that all down, but that was all just stuck in payroll and the budget, does that make sense? Or it was already dispersed to water, sewer, and garbage. So, as we get those-
My concern is, okay, we look at the general fund, and we got X amount of dollars.
Okay.
You're pulling money out of the general fund to pay wages on them things, so we have no actual, after we pay, after we make the transitions to the water wages, and the sewer, and the streets, and the parks, we don't have, let's say, five-hundred-thousand dollars, because some of that money is not gonna be in that general fund, it's gonna be in these other categories for that, so we don't have an accurate general-
You know, we'll have more in the general fund.
Well, when you start making wages out of the general fund, you're not, when you say we got this amount of money, and water, and sewer, and the streets, and everybody, still-
There's only two or three funds effective here, water, sewer, streets, public parks, and those four will go back into the operating fund. So it's not the operating fund's gonna be depleted, it's gonna have more. If you go over to sixty-three-ten, on that one page, you see it says streets, bridges, and sidewalks, we budgeted a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand for that, we haven't used any of And part of that's how it was on the computer, folks, I'm sorry, I mean, it's just, it's a matter of catch-up and do it right. And that takes time.
So you think in the real world, in a perfect world, that we could probably have this thing cleaned up in a couple months yet?
I would guess somewhere in there, we keep hoping every night.
I'm not trying to pinpoint you, but in a couple months, we should be able to get these figures back into where we wanna be, right?
Every month it gets better. Every month it gets better. I just decided, like, this afternoon, that this might help with your understanding of I know for its curiosity, it's gonna make you look at- And the best of all of our advisors. And the best of all of our advisors. Okay, let's start with the, this is the nineteen-twenty adopted budget, we've all seen it before anyway. Actually, start with the beginning balance, if you will. The one that says beginning balance, receipts and transfers. You have three years there. I want you to just go to the nineteen and twenty, the last column. So, you start with a net cash balance, which comes, where our cash is, investments, county treasury balance, and so forth. The night, those just come from before. There's your beginning balance on line five. And then you start adding real estate taxes. You just, you'll, you'll come right off of the ones we just went through, only you'll have a yearly thing. Some of them, we, we went directly to like highway allocation and so forth, so we'd know exactly what that was going to be. And you just follow through, and this is your income. And keep right on going down, and you see the million dollars, eight oh eight, for your total resources available. Total trans, dis- dispersments and transfers, and that's your, that's going to come from this other page. And then you have a balance forward into the next year. So, forty, so we have four-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars to head into our next fiscal year. So, just glancing at that, not trying to disciple, but that's, you see how few totals there are, and try to put that into our budget. And we opened that, you know, we were trying to set up on our, that's a program on the QuickBooks of actual versus budget. So, this was all you have to start with, so, until we break them down from the worksheets that we got to those numbers, we are, won't have them exact. I want you to go to the next page because I want you to draw attention to something because I know there's concerns about money available. The operating expenses are in the first column. Look at number A at the bottom, it says operating expenses should include personal services, operating expenses, supplies, materials, and equipment rental. That's what you see every month in your profit loss. That's your wages, your gas, your repairs, everything. The part B is your capital improvements. This is acquisition of property, real property, which is ground, acquisition, construction, or extension of improvements of real property, that's your buildings, et cetera. There is budgeted. Notice the wastewater, I put two-hundred thousand in, our thing calls for, it's a million-dollar deal, paid out over years. I've got two-hundred thousand in there, and it's supposed to pay for itself through the raised rates of the, to the people, but I knew there was going to be Kirk and Michael, you see, it's budgeted for. The general government up there, sixty-three thousand, so we've got sixty-three thousand budgeted to invest in property, building, et cetera, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. On the other capital outlay, it should include items to be inventoried, that is, equipment and vehicles. We have one-hundred thousand, we've spent twenty-five thousand on one dump truck, four thousand, is that what it was on the other? Five thousand on the other, four? And, and we sold the old one for three today, three hundred, so we paid forty-seven hundred, or thirty-seven hundred. And we paid eighteen, I think, for the pickup. So, we're way under budget there. If we looked at just vehicles, which was what, remember, Don, you said I have to, one of the things I said was that the guys get what they need, so they're getting what they need, as far as vehicles, hopefully. The debt service is, there's two things that has the debt service. One is this second street that we're finishing off, the other one is Sharon Street. There is no other debt service as such. Any other loans and so forth that we pay back and forth is not set up the same way. Someone talked about bonded debt, and if it is bonded, that's on the front page of the budget, and that's what we got in trouble with a couple of years ago, going way of, going way over budget on the first ones that we sent in and had to be changed was because that was, Sharon Street was put there, and that's supposed to be like a school bond or something that you vote for. That can go over your fifty cent limit. These debt service has to stay within our fifty cents per hundred-dollar property tax limit. If it's bonded, we can go over. So, and I'm probably not saying it right, but I know what I'm saying, but, so the debt service is, we have twenty-five thousand dollars plus cement interest left in June or July. We have sixteen thousand that's in your things to pay right now. Instead of waiting until the due date, I said, "Let's get it approved and get it sent with table of interest or get it off," so it's not, so we're not paying wire fees at the last minute. That's the Sharon Street interest. There is a hundred-and-fifty thousand there, which is, the eighty-five thousand was for Sharon Street, the twenty-five thousand was for Second Street, we have an extra forty thousand that if we want to pay on something, we can. So, we're forty thousand over there. On the other, we have include judgments, transfers, transfers, the surplus fees, et cetera. I put a hundred-and-two thousand dollars in on the water, knowing that we were, and I don't, I probably, I probably meant that to be on wastewater, I don't know, but transfers, surpluses, whatever, and the community development, that leaves us wide open, we could put that on the swimming pool if it was left over. So, I keep saying, and you, that we have it in the budget, so this is proof. I would entertain a motion to pay the bills if anybody wants to. You've all seen it.
I'll make the motion to pay the bills, Spurtsman.
I'll second.
Motion by Arlene, second by Isla, pay the invoices that are presented for the meeting. I'll start with Eileen, Arlene, I'm sorry. You two grow together, didn't I? Do that all the time. Isla?
Yes.
Larry?
Isla Donald. Yes.
Okay. So, the next thing, we've, we've got the swimming pool account with Larry, and this is your deal, Larry.
Don and I have discussed it, that money's still in Wisconsin. It's at Vanguard Trust right now, sitting there. I feel and Don feels that we should probably get that money moved from there over to our Crofton Bank and just leave it set, we're not going to do anything with the pool at this point. The economy all over the world is in bad shape, we'll just stick that money in our bank. And that's why I got Mr. Cooper here to give us an idea of what we can put it into. I think we need to set up an account so they know that they can get, we don't need to go and talk to them, we just need to get the wire set there, tell them that there is an account, they got their tax break, and we can get it put into our account across them. Is that correct, Mr. McNally?
To get the tax break, they need to make it to the city of Crofton.
Well, I'm sorry, I missed a step. City of Crofton has to get it first.
Right. And then after you get the money to the city of Crofton, and then you transfer it to the bank, see?
Yeah, I missed a step in there, I apologize for that. That way, we got the money in here, the interest that's going to grow on that could stay into that, that pool whenever it gets, we figure out how the rest of it's going to get paid. Nobody's doing anything, no architect's been called, nothing. It's just, I just want the money in the Crofton, city of Crofton, we can put it into the bank, and...
Is the agreement at this point for just the million or for it is going to include the interest that is collected?
Well, I think we're getting a million, two ninety is what we're going to be getting. And I think I leave it, Mr. Cooper here to give us an idea of what we can do with the account or where we can do with it. So, you're up.
Yeah, you know, the probably, the thing to think about or discuss tonight is what type of account you're going to place that in, you know? If there's going to be fundraising going on throughout the city, you know, it's going to maybe take a couple of years to really get this thing going. So, my advice would be just a, you know, we can give you a special savings account to place those funds into, because if there's going to be fundraising activities on that, then those proceeds can go into that same account, so you just have one dedicated to the pool. So, that would be an option there. We're going to have to purchase US Treasuries to secure those funds for you. As of, as of today, the bank, the city's account balance with the bank is five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. FDIC insurance will cover two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that, so that leaves three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, and we have five-hundred, just shy of five-hundred-and-ten thousand pledged in US securities to secure these accounts. So, we're overfledged by one-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, so, and you're plenty secure there, we're also expecting, you know, another round of real estate taxes being paid, that was due maybe first, you guys will see that account coming properly with, with that later too. So, so basically, we're going to have to go out, whatever the number is, one point two, one point three million, we're going to go out and purchase a United States Treasury. It's the most secure way to secure funds during these very long times. And so, there's no worry there. And then what we kind of agreed to, and I spoke with our president, Marty, is that we would, whatever we receive on that flood security, we would give the city half of that, so we're trying to, you know, get you some more interest on that flood security plus the interest on a savings account if you guys decide to go with that route. So, from an account looking standpoint, I would encourage, you know, these two signatures required on the account, two people listed on the account, but to open that account, we need a motion by the city council to, to open that and designate the purpose of that account as well.
Are you suggesting a checking or a savings order?
If you're not going to be taking a lot of withdrawals, I'd just do a savings account because it's going to be a better advantage if I don't have our savings.
What about a CD?
CD, that's, since we can't loan out one point two million, since it's restricted funds, government funds, we can't loan that money out, so that's why we go and get flood security and we usually, you know, give you some of that interest back because versus putting it on a CD. The other thing I thought was a savings account, if you put it on a CD, you got constant fundraising activities going on, you know, in that account, there's going to have to be some other avenue of deposits.
Right.
Because we can't rewrite the CD all the time.
Right, right.
Add to it.
Right.
Maybe, maybe fundraising activity in our, it may take place a lot, I don't know, but I think as the city and everybody sees that if you get one point two, one point three million donated, it's probably going to open the flood gates, maybe do some other donations. So, a savings account, checking account, something like that, and it would be best just to handle the, the other deposits coming in.
Can, can we open the savings account without even money right away, or do we got to have that money wired in, or how do you do that?
No, that'll be fine. We'll, we'll open the savings account for you, get it all set up, and then you just give the family wiring instructions, and it'll come into your savings account.
How does that fit with what Mr. McNally said about in order for it to be tax deductible that it needs to come into the city?
Yeah, checking, we made that, city of Crofton, then the city of Crofton pursuant to a resolution, a gap about the city council sets up a savings account.
We should set it up after the money comes in. In order for that to be deductible on that end, we need to, that's the way I understood you. So, can we just, can we just hold it? Can, do we put it into our regular city?
No, no, when it comes to the city of Crofton, we need to have either a special meeting or presommy agenda, the weather meeting, to transfer that fund into a special savings account for the sweep.
But it would go into our regular checking account when it comes?
Well, it would just go into the bank account, and then it'd be transferred out of the bank account to general fund, be transferred out of the general fund into a special account.
So, that's in the books, not necessarily the bank? Right? So, if they, if we set up the savings account before it gets here, we just, we just put it into that? We just put it into that?
No, it's got to go through the city of Crofton's book first.
Okay, has to go through the books, not the bank account?
It's got to go, it's got to show us who we see to the city of Crofton, then the city of Crofton passes the resolution as to what to do with the money.
Okay, okay. So, what we're saying here is even though we set up the check, the savings account before it gets here, the money cannot go directly to that new account until it goes into the city of Crofton's account.
And now you guys either write a check or something or...
So, we need to have, we need to have a vote to even set that account up?
You need to have the money before you set the account.
We have to have the money first, okay?
So, Mr. McNally, are you, is there a form that has to be filled out from the city of Crofton that we send it to them and they sign it back, or how does that work?
Well, there's no form like that.
For the tax, for the tax purposes.
What happens is that they make the checkout and the transfer out to the city of Crofton, the city of Crofton sends the same receipt for the fund as a gift.
They take it to their...
That's all into it.
That's it?
Do we have to show them that we have a tax number that they didn't take it on the other end?
No, they just use the regular city of Crofton's tax number.
Okay, I mean, you still got to put a tax number so they know what money, what, who they sent it to, right?
Well, they give, they don't care about the tax number they sent to the city of Crofton, we report to them what our tax number is, they report that tax number on the gift act return. It's not coming.
And then once it's in our account, it's deposited into our account, then we have a meeting and vote to set up a special account, and then we open the account.
And put the money into that account.
Cannot open the account till we have the money in hand.
Yes, I understand. In that motion, you set forth who the signatures are on that account, and under what kinds of conditions dispersals are made out of that account.
Okay.
So, I need to contact them and give them a letter and tell them that we'll send, send it to the city of Crofton and we'll follow up with the paperwork?
Didn't you guys last month ask Mr. McNally to contact them?
Well, last month, they wanted me to help them set up the account, but I emailed Larry and says that we need to get the money before we set up the account. And so...
But I know we had to get the money, but I didn't know the process, it had to come through Crofton and then from Crofton into the account.
If I, if I name, if I told the neighbor to trust me, I can write him a letter setting forth the procedure to be used if in fact they wish to make this donation to the city of Crofton. And they would use that letter as a basis for making, transferring to the city of Crofton account.
So, councils, do we need to vote to have Mr. McNally set that up with them?
No, we don't need to, to vote on it.
Can we just ask him to do it?
All I need is the name and address and who you think of my bond with.
I got that, I'll get it to you.
If you could get that to him, then he can contact them, it can be set here, once we get it in the account, we can set up a special account. Does that approve, okay, with everything, Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, I guess.
And you'll know, but you know where, how much and so forth before you get there for your...
Yeah, when we, when we shop for our, when we purchase our US Treasury funds, secure your funds for the pool donation, I'll let you know what the interest rate is and all that, and then break down savings account, so you guys have all that. So, when you guys proceed to fund, yeah, that's the main thing, the bank just needs in the minutes that you guys voted to create an account, who's going to sign it, and the purpose of the account.
But do we need to have a, we're not going to get a checking, we're just going to get a savings account at this point and leave it set, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what you guys just called, that, like I said, I just thought savings or checking would be easier if you're going to have continued deposits or out of here.
I agree with that totally unless we did different size, you know, if we could get better income, better whatever on CDs, but you said that cannot be used... get better income, better whatever on CDs, but you said that cannot be used to loan against, so you couldn't use it to?
Yeah, with funds like that, we usually don't place them in CD, we usually just give you the interest that we get off the US Treasury bonds to.
Okay.
To secure your money.
Okay.
Or, or basically lose the money on the deal since we can't.
Okay.
Loan the money out.
That sounds good, I mean, whatever's best.
Yeah, we just, we disagree, we do the same thing with, like, Naver and.
Sure.
Other schools and things like that, so.
Whatever you think's best, that's, that was me. So, now, but the money, the CD that we have on Sharon Street, we can borrow against that?
Well, I think that's, that's a decision for legal, that, using, using restricted funds as collateral, I'd be the question I had presented to the committee. When we, when we initially talked in principle about those terms, it was my understanding that those funds just came out of the general account, I didn't know that they came out of the.
Sharon Street, okay.
On checking account.
Okay, alright.
So, that, that'd be a question for your.
Okay, so we need, alright, sounds good.
If it was just fifty thousand now with the general account, you know, in the history that I've been here five years, yeah, the city used to use that as collateral for their operating line.
That was that water and sewer funds that we had to do.
And so, you know, we gave you the two percent of what the city was paying and all that, but I guess at that time when we talked, I didn't know this, this was actually Sharon Street funds.
Yeah.
Street funds at that time.
And it came right out of the Sharon Street assessment.
Yeah, and I had my girls look up the tickets just to make sure, and it did come directly out of that account.
Yeah. Okay, so while we're talking, okay, so, we've got, we've got that all taken care of?
I'll get it generally.
Email, email me the information, I'll write the letter, I'll send it to you guys before I send it out there, see if you have any problems with it. You can call.
Send it to all the councils.
Send it. All of you before I send it out there, see if they approve of it, and then if you approve of it, let the clerk know, and then I'll send it out.
Okay, okay, sounds good. So, while we're on the banking, we need to have Lisa on as a signer on our checks, so that we, so that we can get business done, because we have two signers, and the bank would like us to have it in our minutes that we voted to put her on, is that right, Larry? That's what?
Yep.
So, could I, I would entertain a motion to have Lisa added as a signee of checks.
So, we'll have Kathy and Lisa?
Yeah, both. And me, we're all three, then if, if one of those girls is gone, we can get the checks out. That also gives them rights, like, to the, for two people to go to the bank, to the bank box, you know, like, we had to go get titles and stuff to get, all that stuff, so you gotta, so, just gives us more viability there.
I'll make a motion to put Lisa on the checking account as the same signer.
Motion by Arlene?
I'll second that.
Second by Isla. Okay, Dawn?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you want to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I think we need to close the public hearing now, thank everybody's coming, Father Kelly. A motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
By Larry, Isla?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, so, if you look at our, let's go right on with that swimming pool, we've got to have.
You need to approve the conditional use permit for the senior housing.
I'll make a motion to approve the senior housing.
Conditional permit, okay.
Conditional permit, yes.
Larry?
I'll second.
And second by Dawn, and the vote will be Isla?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Larry.
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on through quickly the discussion of the swimming pool operations in regard to the big old virus going around. Uh, yeah, Larry?
Sorry, did you, did you make a motion, approve a motion to add or ask a signer to the account?
Yeah, I did. And, and we approved it.
You approved it, and that was designating to the general account or all three accounts?
All three accounts.
Okay.
Is that okay to everybody? And, and also, and I made your remark too, that, like, the bank box and everything. Okay? And we've got it bonded, so that's done. Any other things, Larry?
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay, yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, so we're clear on it. So, the state is, is suggesting that we do not open the pool before July fifteenth. The League of Municipalities is suggesting that we don't open it all summer for fear of an outbreak that would generate lawsuits. And with all this money in the bank, we sure don't wanna lose it. If we did open on July fifteenth, we only would have one month to sleep. I'm just giving you what I know to be true. The, I pulled the profit and loss for the swimming pool for the last three years here, and we took in right at twelve thousand dollars each of the three years, and our cost was right at thirty-one to thirty-five thousand each year. So, we've lost right at twenty grand for three years. So, that's just information I'm drawing out there. So, whether, you know, a lot of that's in getting the pool heated, so then you say, well, if we open in July, will we have to do that? But we still have to clean it, we still have to do this, we still have to have lifeguards, we have to do all of that. So, is it gonna be worth it to open for a month and take a chance? Is there anything to this whole garbage of this virus, or should we forget about it and just go live our lives like Yankton did last night?
Well, I've been watching a lot of news, like everybody else in this room, and I have sundown in Omaha, which is intense with coronavirus at the med center, and he says this area or zone, or whatever you call it, could probably see a spike in it in middle of June and July. So, I don't think we should even risk it because.
That's what we're afraid of, isn't it?
I just don't think we wanna risk.
Two hundred and some cases in York Park over the weekend.
Yeah, yeah. And Yankton's got, got a bunch of them over there too, so, you know, it's, I think we could just, I think kids will find a lot of things to do, parents can take them wherever they want to, but I don't wanna.
They wanna go swimming, go to light, we're close enough, right?
I just don't think we need.
Our water bills, you know, add to our water bills, everybody will have a swi- little swimming pool in their yard, we'll hike those prices up, make some money this summer. So, do you think we need to just decide now, maybe?
I think so. I don't think, you know, in next month, it's gonna be, it's gonna probably get worse, we don't, we don't know what this thing is gonna do. And now that I heard on TV, my wife did, before I came to the meeting, I had to go to Menards, everybody's gotta wear masks, so, they're already getting geared up for some of this stuff, somebody knows something around here, but they're not saying anything. So, I think it'd just be on the safe side, we just don't make a decision tonight, if we don't do it, we don't open it.
Dawn, what do you think?
It's, looks like that's the way the trend is going, and, and who knows where those viruses, it looks like it's increasing, and it's kinda like fashion, everything starts on the coast and we finally get it in the middle of it.
Yes.
This virus probably is the same thing, although we have meantime places that have escalated them.
I thi- and if, if that is close proximity and working, then the theory's right that you keep your distance, isn't it? If that's what's causing that. Ladies, what do you think?
Yeah, well, I just think in a pool, I don't know, I'd be anywhere getting close to getting water, because you know when you swim and stuff, and you come up and like, stuff comes out of your nose, and.
Yeah.
It's just there, and I'm just.
I know the governor's conference said, good heavens, if you're not gonna let them in school, why would you let them in the swimming pool?
And you know they get packed in a pool, most of the, you know, they're on top of each other, and I just don't think it's.
But all of their body fluids are in that pool.
I know.
As far as the mucus and that, which is where it is, which is.
Right.
Where the contamination.
And you can throw, torn you want in it, but I, it's just too big of a risk, I think.
Do we wanna make that decision tonight, or do you wanna wait another month?
Well, I think people would like to know if, you know, they open, they've been asking me.
Okay, let's make the decision.
And I just heard.
If somebody wants to make a, a motion to make that decision tonight?
See, it'd be June, next month.
Right? And that takes the pressure off all the lifeguards and everybody, what that they have to get qualified and what that they need to, you know, look for other work and that whole thing. Because we got the lifeguard concerned at this point. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, however you want to go.
I'll make a motion to close the pool this year because of coronavirus.
Motion by Larry?
I'll second.
Second by Arlene. Isla?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Now, I'm gonna throw this out there. The reason I brought these three years, it looks like we, what did I say, we've lost approximately thirty-five or twenty, twenty and something. If we get through the summer and don't have a whole lot of extra expense because of the coronavirus, or if we don't have a bunch of this or that or the other, then maybe we could set aside the money we saved for the pool? Or at least.
Very good possibility, I mean, I think.
Would that be an idea?
I would consider.
We're, we're pushing in the right direction, not saying we're gonna do anything with the pool until we get the money figured out.
Listen, when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, we can figure it out, which will be September, which is just right after the season of pool. Okay, that's just something we'll all think about. We need to, let's jump over number two for just a minute and go to the possible, the consideration of new park fees. Okay? The only reason I want to bring this up is because in, we've reserved the shelters, and this may not be an issue because we may not have people grouping, but last year we had a twenty-five dollar deposit to reserve a shelter, and then we gave it to deposit bank. In the meantime, we bought signs to show that it was reserved, we sent somebody out to hang those signs, we sent buddy, somebody out to pick those signs up, and the guys did extra garbage pickup around those areas. And several have said to me, every other town just charges the twenty-five dollars and forget about it. It's worth that twenty-five dollar fee to reserve the shelter and not give it back. Would anybody agree with that? No.
Yeah.
So, if I could have a motion to just, would just keep, it would just charge twenty-five dollars for the reservation. Now, if they don't use it, we could think about giving it back, but if we go out there.
They're gonna be.
They're, they're supposed to clean up, but our guys have to go pick up the extra garbage thing and the stuff, I mean, they put them in barrels, but then they go out and pick the barrels up and take them to our dumpster, it's a world of, garbage people don't go into parks to pick that up, parks don't. So, our guys do.
I think we probably need a stipulation that if we have, if it's stormed out, rained out, or cold out.
Give it back to them, yeah.
If they don't show up, a possible refund.
You bet. Just like we do with the auditorium, if they have to cancel, we give them back.
But if they do use it, then we don't give the money.
Right, right. Is that okay with everybody? Take a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we don't, if they, if they're using the park, we don't give back the deposit.
Okay, it's a twenty-five dollar fee.
Twenty-five dollars.
With refunding on cancellation, right?
There's a fee now instead of the deposit.
Yes. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Dawn, so the vote goes Larry, you know, Dawn?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
And Arlene?
Yes.
Okay, now, let's go to the appointment of the QuickBooks administrator, I told you we can't talk to him without a QuickBooks administrator. Right now, Kathy is on as a user, so if she's in there, she can say, okay, you can talk to these other two, but we don't have an administrator who they will give all the information to or that can appoint anybody else. So, we have already applied, I think, my, my plan here is, and I just want you to know this, that as we go along, put together a book that says, these are the things that need to be taken care of in transition from one mayor to another. So, at the time when, when there's an election in November, and that is changing hands before that December meeting when they take office, there should be a training time or an open of the books time, or a in the office time to get it, or whatever you wanna say, but all of this should be laid out, like, this is who you contact for QuickBooks, this is the, the, you know, what do you call them, passwords and so forth for this, this, this.
Protocol.
Say what?
Protocol.
Protocol, absolutely. So, then, then they can get all of those changes made before they get there and they don't spend five hours on the phone on a day when they're trying to get something done.
Can, can we have two people in case somebody?
They have a primary administrator, Larry, that's all they'll have.
Alright.
So, that's been made out in my name at this point, and I don't know, they didn't, they said that they thought they had everything, but in case they call back tomorrow and say, do you have board approval, I want to be able to say yes. So, I would entertain a motion to make the mayor, and that, it means me, but that would be anybody that comes in as mayor, unless you wanna change it.
In, in the future.
As, as the primary administrator of that account. We couldn't even use the city's email because it was connected to the prior, the prior.
Is that the common norm for QuickBooks to do that?
Yep, and that's okay because our, our, things are secure that way. We also, by the way, found out that we were, and, and the credit card did credit the one payment to QuickBooks, one of those were, was a fraud, and they said that if it doesn't have Intuit on it, don't listen to them. They're using QuickBooks, but they don't have the Intuit on anything that comes in, and they're a fraud. There was also, an email came in to Kathy that said they were me, but the email wasn't even anywhere close to mine, but my name was big and bold, she just walked right through it, figured that was me, and by the second email, I was requesting the twenty-five thousand dollar check, and she decided at that point that maybe that was a fraud. So, so, there, it's out there, we've gotta keep our eye on it.
Geez, Kathy, I thought that would work for us.
Yeah, that was Dawn. Motion to, okay, Cheryl, the mayor, the, the primary administrator of QuickBooks.
I'll make a motion that the mayor is gonna be the administrator of QuickBooks.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Dawn. Isla?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, we've added Lisa. Oh, Lisa needs to have her wages adjusted, we, we already have the clerk's wages set, we don't have to do anything with that, but she started on a reduced wage to get trained, she's trained, so, do we need a motion for that? So, let's, just to get her up to the clerk wage, which is sixteen.
Sixteen, is it?
Okay. Motion? Or questions?
Training's over, she can jump over sticks and.
Yep, and pick them up.
Sometimes.
And pick them up on the way.
Sometimes.
I'll make a motion to increase her wages to the clerk's.
Is she still, is she still on part-time then, or?
Yes, I am.
Well, and, and probably it's gonna wind up with both of them working some part-time here.
So, part-time hours, about forty hours, what, twenty each, or?
Whatever we need.
Okay.
Yeah. Sometimes they'll both be in there and sometimes they won't.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, second by Larry, Arlene?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
I, I got Larry, okay. Dawn?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And, I'm trying to brush here. Okay, the guidelines and hours of operation on the city tree dump, and I'm open for anybody to make a statement if they want to.
What happened there, what, what's happening?
Well, it, it's been going on for quite a while, Larry can tell you more than I can. The people go out there with the rails off decks, and when they build a new deck, they throw their, their old lumber out there, they got nails in, half the time they bury it under a tree, so you know it's intentional, and then he goes out to push the trees into a pile of burn and ruins some truck tires on the payload.
Well, I've noticed some thirteen county plates been going into our city dump too, and I know Crofton's in North Town.
And, and do remember that thirteen's right here, you know, but they would be outside of the city. And it does stay on the side of the thing, it's for the city. We, he came in the other day and he said, you know, we had tires, and then he'd gone out there and some, it was the thirteen county that was throwing something in the hole that he'd dug to push trees in. He said, as soon as he got there, they jumped, they got blacked right away. And he said, but they threw something in the hole, so out of curiosity, what did they throw in the hole that's so bad they take off? So he goes over and he said, you know, it's three items, like a jug and a box and a bag of garbage or something, right? And it's like, why would you get in such a half over three little items, you know? And I said, because Larry, you don't know what was in the pickup, they didn't get to dump, cause you caught them. Might have been, it might have been a stove, you know, or, but.
I heard that we locked the dump, and I'm, I'm kinda concerned, uh, the council, I would ask them if they were concerned about putting, you know, I'm a hunter, we got game cameras out, and we set this thing up.
I'd love it, is that a that?
Yeah, I'll just hear me out. I mean, we're talking about a lot of things, but we're, we're just gotta hear these things out. I think we need to have it so it, it, we get the license plate, because you can track the person by license plate on the vehicle in Nebraska. And then we should have it so that pickup, you can see what kind of debris that's in there. So if we have questions, we can call them up and say, we got you on camera, put a note on the thing, this is under surveillance, so people might deteriorate coming in there all the time.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think you're right, I think if you just have camera there, you can see it being dumped.
I mean, we gotta have, we gotta put it right on our sign, this is surveillance now, if you're caught putting illegal, you will be fined. That's the only way we're gonna stop some of this.
Can't put it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. As far as going, going back into the nineties, they tried doing it with, with it locked, cause there were several times, I think if I recall correctly, they wanted, somebody brought in a couple hog carcasses and tossed them in.
They just use it as a seal fit.
Yeah, and they, they, they locked it, but then you ran into a problem where you've got all this stuff that you, grass puddings and whatever, and you ran to Leon's house, he wasn't home, you ran to whoever, you're trying to find somebody with a key, nobody's around. Well, then, they would go to, okay, I'm gonna leave the key in my mailbox.
Yeah, and.
Okay, so that someone knows we have the key, but then they turn around and they don't bring the key back. Now, now, you, you only got two keys around, so.
But we, but, and we understand that that, one of the guys is always on duty. One of the guys is always on duty, they have to be. So, so for right now, we can cover it, but are you saying don't lock it, but put the surveillance camera?
Put the surveillance camera up there, put on that.
Maybe, maybe until you can get the camera.
We're gonna, right now, because we've got, you know, I got soft-hearted the other day and said, yeah, maybe we should take it off, and the guy said, hey, we started this, let's carry it through.
Put the camera again, operate it, still have it locked, and then making sure that.
Well, somebody said, they, they make them very small, you can put them on a fence post, and you can kinda see the traffic going in and out there.
Well, you gotta make it.
But right now, we need to lock it.
Put my hands on top of it, I'm a, I'm a, I hunt deer, and you gotta know how to hide it from poachers to, you know, and put it in a box that nobody can get to it.
Well, I want to go take a look at what's going, Aaron?
Hi, I'm gonna be honest, I have a binocular, but I understand why you would want to lock it or you wouldn't want to lock it, but my question is, is there a current sign that says, like, Crofton's the tree dump, not just, how can you just dump it?
No, it says tree dump. And you're right, and I went out there and made sure, and it's very clear and very well painted.
I was just curious.
Yeah, good question. Because somebody asked me that, and it's very well marked, it says, no household garbage, no nothing, nothing but trees.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't know, cause you probably can't define someone without being in your offices and whatnot, but.
Well, here's the deal, if we make it a dump, we have to be certified dump, and then we get fined if we're letting people dump stuff out, right? Isn't that, is it, am I right on that, Jim?
Well, you gotta be real careful, because if you don't monitor it, and the state comes out and they find something in there that should be dumped in there.
Then it comes back on us. Yeah, it's back on us.
They, they make a game camera that you can, and all of us hunters got them. You can pull it right on your, your smartphone or your computer in there, so nobody has to go and pull a card. They can, that way we can pull up, pull it right on the computer, you can see how many vehicles came in, the license plates, anybody with twelve.
Okay, well, let's work on that while we're keeping it locked. Like I said, the guys have got a key, I'm finding out that I'm right on the road, so I've had several stop and get the key for me. Sunday, I told one to just leave it open till he's done, he said he had three loads. When he came back by with the key, he said, there's two others out there, and they said they'd lock it. And I went out later and it was locked, so.
But if they have it locked and, and we don't get nothing, no cameras, they're gonna have debris laying all over this town. They're just gonna shove it into an alley or off the curb. And Kim can remember years back before you guys were all here, it was a messy dump, it was a terrible mess.
And, and people literally would get out there and the gate would be locked, and they would just dump their stuff right there.
Yeah, we had somebody.
That's not our property either.
Yeah.
And then the sitting in the people, the farmers, were jumping on our case, the city's case.
Yeah.
But Kim and I can remember, people had it locked, and they said, well, they won't care, we'll just dump it right here, piss on them, they can't get in, I'm gonna lay it right here, so.
Yeah, well, you know, hopefully all those people moved out of town.
My suggestion is get a game camera that's remote to our computer, so we don't have to go out there and pull those cards out, and it's, it's so much easier.
Camera.
You know what, take off.
Now, it's gonna be solid.
Well, it depends on how clarified you want to have it, you know, you know, I could find out for you.
Okay, let's, it, but it's okay with everybody if we keep it locked at this point, especially at night, okay? Because we think a lot of this is coming from construction sites, you know, because there's new stuff out there too, but, but it's still construction stuff. Okay, what am I missing? Go back to the approval of new employees. Art Bartlett's on here, he doesn't want pay for his work, but we just need to, everybody kind of include him in. I talked to Ryan Lecker about volunteer people, and he said, as long as they're working for the city, they're covered. So I just wanna make sure that we all understand that. Ed Steppen has applied to help with mowing and stuff when needed. Kayla Enrum has applied to help with, like, cleaning bathrooms, cleaning in here in the bathrooms or the whatever. She can do extra little filing jobs or whatever that we can pick up. The other two applied for, um, lifeguards. And last year's lifeguards, we basically said, you're already in, you don't have to reapply, but if we've closed the pool, that takes care of that. The, the guys are gonna do a lot of probably street work this year, and with the mixing of the strip and stuff, there's gonna be a lot of running back and forth and taking you from point A to point B where your vehicle is tied up over here, so we kinda thought that Kayla could do some of that too. She was looking for work just like this, but she's not a lifeguard, so she.
So, so what, what's the RA rate that we're gonna pay for?
Well, that's a.
Is it, we need to discuss it?
Fourteen is the part-time, right? For all of them, yeah, I think.
How many hours in a week's time are we looking at possibly we need them? I know it's not growing grass right now, and they're not mowing, they're mowing, but they're not mowing a lot right now, but.
Telling that yesterday.
It's gotta rain. Well, I understand that, guys, but I mean, you know, you're mowing, and it's like, you know, we don't get, if we might get a year like 2012, we might not have no rain at all.
Well, we're not gonna abuse it, Larry, we never have abused it, so, all we're saying is, you know, Art does a lot, we don't even have to consider Art for money, cause he won't take any money. He uses his equipment, he won't even let us buy gas for him. And he does a lot of spraying, but, but Ed said, you know, if you need some extra help, I'm here, or like, and we always hire someone to drive that extra dump truck. And Leon's been a little bit laid up here, so we may need more help there, he's always helping part-time. So, we're just asking you to approve these people who we can call in for extra help if we need them.
We never advertise any of this stuff.
I don't remember, we advertised for, um, we had an ad in the paper, we would need pool, that we would need extra people in the office, and that there were, at one point, we had several things. Does anybody remember what all that ad read? But I know we had, it was quite a long ad, but pool and office and, uh, I think we had part-time meter readers or something. I don't remember, I'd have to go back and look at it.
That's kind of.
Is that a necessity?
The dangers of.
It's not a necessity, Mr. McNally says, but whatever.
The dangers, we did, you know, and we hire people, and there's other people that.
Other people might be wanting to put in for it too, I don't know.
The free, the free one doesn't bother me.
Maybe I would ask you, and because we're gonna start mixing with that mixing strip, and we're gonna need some help. I guess, are we gonna, if we, do we have a truck for an extra driver, or do we have to hire the whole truck?
We're gonna try to run R3.
Your R3 truck, yeah. So, um, if we can get these guys approved, and then we'll advertise if you feel more comfortable with that.
Do you have to have a CDL license to run those trucks?
No.
Huh?
No.
No. And you know, Ed will care one way or the other. The sub chief inside.
Yeah, I know, he just, he just called, he knew we might need help mowing and/or driving truck, and he could do either. And we, and Kayla came in and asked if there was anything, and I said, you know, maybe while they're doing that extra work out there, she, if, if we, you know, open stuff up in the parks, she could be cleaning bathrooms and doing some.
Have we opened up the parks, I mean, are they all open?
We've never closed them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We, we delayed cleaning the bathrooms and open them just so we would, you know, to kinda see what happened here, we, I think we can open it.
I think the girls softball and Little League baseball, I don't think they're having anything this year.
They're, they're kind of delayed, aren't they, by some of the recommendations?
I think, I think I talked to Jeremy Buschamp, and he's, uh, he hasn't really made a decision, he's gotta talk to his board, but he asked me what I thought, and I said, boy, I said, I don't know if I'd wanna risk that out there, so.
Right.
So the bathrooms out there will be minimum, because they.
We want to open the one at the base of the hill down from Arlene's because of the community gardens. Oh, and that's another thing.
Oh, that, I'm talking about the.
About the baseball.
Baseball field.
Yeah. Right, but I, by the one.
Do we, you guys clean the bathrooms at the big baseball field, Larry?
No. At the baseball field, we do, not the softball.
You wanna have your parks probably open as long as you're not gonna get a lot of congregation of people.
So we only have two, two bathrooms in town, one on the north park and one over here, correct? That's the only, the only two that we have for public access.
But like I said, we want that one because it's right down the hill from the community gardens, and if somebody comes there and walks all day, they'd have a bathroom.
Do we need to put signage up saying that they're not sanitized?
No, we can't.
Use your own risk, or something like.
You gotta put something up to, you know, we're covering.
We're worried about the late location of the. So if we have them open, then they're not sanitized.
That's a legal, Mr. McNally, that's a legal question.
COVID-19.
But certainly would hurt.
Cover everything.
Because I, I, I just know that Tony's going to say, if you think there's a risk, why don't you let people in?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm not sure what the sign is gonna talk about.
So, they know that we, we're, I guess we're in the plant, or you know, you go over to this place else, and they got to sit there. And the bathroom's over in South Dakota, they gotta paste it right out there.
Yeah, but like you said, if you put the sign up, then when they wanna sue you, they said, well, you knew. That's why you put the sign up, cause you knew we were gonna get sued. Isla?
I think probably the question probably could have been moot, because I think Congress is going to pass a law that Dick Stamps said he's diligent from being sued because of the coronavirus.
That's a cool.
But at this time, they haven't passed that, so what can happen at all? But the doubt that we represent, uh, let's say, is real conservative position in saying, we is not gonna hold it because it risks, and that's bas- basically on what these American people tell us. But, you know, you can just go so far too, because you can put a sign up there and tell people not to come in, but if you have a family out there having a picnic, are you gonna send a cop over there and chase them away? You know, it's, it's a real difficult situation.
It's kinda like, you know, they have water you can drink, the water you can't, you put a sign up saying, you know, don't drink this water. They're all over those cabins, and this is about the same type of thing, use your own rest.
Well, that's not on the agenda, except for the community garden, so.
Say it again? What?
Never mind.
It's not on the agenda, whether it's not to be going to close the parks.
Oh, yeah, right.
So, it's not something you could say tonight.
So, it's, so it's okay for us to go ahead and open those restrooms, or yay or nay, or we have to do it?
Well, until you pass a resolution and a motion.
Until we say no.
To close the park, or, or public park, public restroom.
And we just don't open them usually until summer anyway, but, you know? We, so far, we've just delayed.
A lot of time.
Are they open yet, Larry?
No, I'm scared of that at all, because how many times we got cleaning the bay?
Right.
We do open. For somebody's gonna get sued.
And we don't know, that we don't have the guidelines for that about cleaning, you know?
Sometimes are letting the parks open, closing the bathrooms.
So that may be a moot point then, we may just have to keep them closed and, and right now, we haven't closed the parks because there's been no issue.
Either if you keep the bathroom open, you're gonna have, some, somebody goes in there and sanitizes.
Gonna have to clean it, yeah.
We're gonna sell some money by keeping them closed, and so open the parks, they still can use the ice, but. You know, they have to open the bathrooms, you take the.
They are locked now.
They're locked.
Yeah, they're locked, cause we always lock them in the winter, and we just haven't opened them yet because of this.
Wyngon only has one restroom open, and all the rest are closed.
So can we just leave them closed?
But no, I can, I won't even risk it.
Just keep them closed?
Yeah, we're not that big of a town, if you can't find.
There's, there's restrooms at, public restrooms at the, at the filling stations.
Yeah, we, you don't have to drive twenty-five miles across town.
Or you go to Dawn's house, he's on the north side.
I gotta sign up to use the.
Carol's on the highway.
Yeah. I'm down here, Dawn's over there, and, and Larry's over here, so we've got them all covered. Okay, so, um, so we, so we're gonna charge twenty-five dollars for spur gathering at the park, but we're not gonna open.
That twenty-five dollars, it's cleaning up the, the excess trash cans and all.
Well, that's, yeah, it's for the shelters, and that's for, like, now, instead of just deposit, okay? So, so does anybody wanna make a motion to approve Art, Ed, and Kayla? My, one of the things I wanted Kayla to do is, cause we never have time, and if you want us to advertise, we can do that. But we still have lots of drawers full of stuff that needs to be sorted and marked and put in the basement, do records. We also need to make sure that we get our files in order so that, um, this is a fun one, okay? So, there was a day when we were looking for something with Ponca tribe, so there was the interlocal agreement, there's the Inlilak's, there's the Ponca tribe, so I'm looking under all three of those alphabetically, and I said, Kathy, do you know where that is? And she said, under smoke chart. So, so unless we can get these, you know, to where we know. So, so unless we can get these, you know, to where we know how things are filed, we can look all day. We need to get a lot of that stuff organized in the office. And we can use someone just, that mundane putting labels on and, and clearing out files and putting it in the basement, marking it.
What we could do is, someone could pass a motion through Ask in the Mirror to hire a set of part-time help if needed during the course of summer.
And then not putting names on it?
Right.
Would you go with that?
But the, but the thing is, you just said that you had a lot of files in there, you gotta have somebody with some clerical knowing what to do, because I, I could go in there and...
Not if they're just making labels and sticking them, yeah, they're just making labels and...
And then these ladies, they do a pair of, or, you know, the ladies in the office can be doing the work that needs to be done bookwise and all that, and, and, you know, you can direct people.
A lot of it's just, just making the labels and putting stuff in envelopes and marking the boxes, with stuff we've already predetermined.
Filing is, everybody has their own system.
Yeah.
That's something you gotta watch out for.
I know, that's why we have to get, we have to get some guidelines, and we have to get them...
I went to school for filing.
There's filing, there are filing.
We don't want our secretaries to spend all their time showing somebody how to do everything, when they're taking away from the stuff that we're supposed to get done.
But it's, it's gotta get done somehow, but I think, you know...
Somebody that has some kind of clerical background would help, I mean, I, I just don't think we need to take our secretaries and our clerks and everything to...
Well, I can do it for nothing, that's why I think, yeah. Is that pretty well everything? What about, what about a truck driver and so forth? Do you want to just approve somebody to help with something if we need it? Do we need to come back to a meeting if we need somebody?
Well, Larry, are we gonna be using him? How much, how much time are we losing on truck drivers in summer?
We have a whole strip to build.
Depends what we're doing. Armor coating and stuff, it sure now have an excellent one, should be about...
So, how long is, how long, and you just paid the armor coating that's gonna have to be done this year? How many weeks, or are we talking a month, or what?
Well, it's hard to say, because we have been moving halfway across the street here. They'll probably take at least a month for armor coating, if not more.
Plus, the, the big thing that's added this year, and that's why that budget's in there, is every three years, we built the mixing strip. That's this year, that's a big project. It takes a lot of time, and it takes away from the normal stuff that two guys do, so they can always use another one. Leon has always put a lot of hours in, has, has, wasn't there another one? Luke?
That's it.
Okay, that's right, there's three of them. So, you know, what I'm telling you is, you know, Leon's had surgery, he's slowed down somewhat. He wants to work, but we don't, you know, we're not gonna drive him hard.
You know, we all hear about how the streets in Crofton are bad, we need them repaired, we need them done, and I just don't understand why you wouldn't want to hire someone part-time, I don't think they're gonna abuse the, the hourly, the hours and overdue, but we got the new strip mixed up this year, and just get on it and get done.
Well, my theory on these streets, and I've been kind of holding off on this, because I think, and I don't know how many miles, does anybody know how many miles of streets we got in town here?
I don't know.
Whatever it is. And the streets are terrible, and I, I bitch to myself every time I drive over them, and my truck's just jumping up and down. My theory about this is, they're, they're going to, they got, they got, I don't know kind of what machine it is, but they eat up asphalt, they're doing it on 121 down there. My, my theory is, we come in, if we got, let's say, 50 miles, and I don't know how many we got, if we would go and mill them all down, take, take the bullet and mill them all down, then we go back, everybody knows they're gonna be getting redone, but just leave them milled down until we can afford to do one or two blocks a year, and put a good coating down. That's what I, that's what I'm hoping we can do for our streets. We can't, we can't just keep adding on top of this stuff, because...
No, but we need to do them in sections, Larry, not just mill everything in town, because you can't, we can't fix that many off parts.
You know what I'm saying, Larry, now this is all done, we're not adding over maybe six feet or less, you're not gonna go over that. Everybody thinks we're putting on two or three inches.
No, I know, you're not.
Still on the cracks, still on the holes, ceilings, that's all we're doing.
All right, I know that, but look at our, look, look at our curbs, our curbs, we don't already have any curb left in some of these areas, and we gotta mill them down to get down to where we can put a decent coating, when we can afford it. We gotta mill this down, but you can't bring a, you can't bring a miller in there.
We've been working at it.
You can't keep, you can't bring a, a, a miller in there and just do one or two blocks, they're not gonna come in here and do one or two blocks. We need to do the, the whole town and get it milled down, and everybody would realize that we're gonna fix it.
Why don't we get it our own?
Well, we don't...
You can do a lot, but...
There's, there's grants out there, I know there is, for streets, and we need to, we need to take it a, a good look at what they cost and where we can get the best deal for it.
I may have this for five, six years, if I can get a mill for this town.
Did you find any, did you find any mills at all?
I don't know.
Find a mill, I mean, I took some money.
Well, and there's grants for streets.
Well, you know, Larry, we all say that, there's grants for this, there's grants for that, then go find them.
All right.
About half the time, we go look for a grant, then they'll say, "Well, your income's not at the right spot." Nope, can't do that because of this.
I don't know, some of these other towns are smaller than us, and they, they're getting it done, I don't know how they're doing it, but I don't know how they're...
Well, and our street engineer said, "You know what, there's a lot of small towns near sites that have dirt and gravel yet, and at least you got pavement." Maybe we should go back to dirt and gravel.
Well, I've been there, I've been in...
And then we wouldn't have potholes.
I lived here when it was dirt and gravel.
Pat, go.
We're off the subject now, where this is all good, and it's all stuff that needs to be answered, the topic to bring it all back, was can we have help
Yes.
To do the streets? As an example, you know, I went in here, here last year, Larry and I were trying to fill potholes, just the two of us, it did take us 45 minutes to an hour to give all the equipment down there. When there's three, or maybe even four people, maybe one or two days a week that everything works out, but we hit it done. If we had three or four people, we were handling out potholes left and right, there are just certain processes that take certain amount of time, so if we have the freedom to bring Ed and Leon on a bay over full of potholes, we need to spray oil in the pothole, we need to fill material in the pothole, spray the oil, the equipment, the outtakes, two people. And then it takes another person to run the bay over for the material, and somebody has to pack that material in. And then once that's done, you got oil, and you got armor coating. Just think about how fast we can do that. I want to encourage you guys to give the mayor and my supervisor the opportunity to, to do this as efficiently as they know how, because it sure looks like they know what they, what they're doing, meaning I'm no expert yet, but I've, I've been around the street and watched it. And if you want, you're paying for your buck, it's all types of things, three to four people, and we don't need to be cleaning bathrooms and doing all the, and some of these other, we run after parts, you know, at 20 bucks an hour, where we have, if we have Kayla to run the gig, then to go get a part that we have to have, we're here on the street with a broken down 1945 machine, we're just gonna get the parts.
Exactly.
And this is, I mean, I'm not trying to make fun and put it, put it down, that's what we have to work with, how can we still do this the best we can? And right now, you know, until we get better equipment, you know, just give those people, I don't know what they're doing, the ability to bring in the people, so we can do it efficiently.
Thank you. I'm gonna call for a motion, if everybody makes motion to allow us to hire part-time work as needed at a part-time wage of 14 bucks.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
By Isla? Look, go, Zarlene?
Well, I'm going to abstain, because I have a conflict of interest that I have.
Okay, thank you, Isla?
Yes.
Is it gonna be advertised at all, or just?
We can.
You're just gonna call somebody up?
We can advertise, but what we're doing is giving us authority to go ahead and hire when we find the people that are willing to work at the job.
You can add the paper right away?
And Don?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, can I?
Yes.
At, at some point, the city used to always have some Gunther boys, they were home from college, and they always had some Gunther boys that worked with the city crew. I don't know what year they quit doing that, but one day they might be running a weed eater or mower, and the next day, they're driving a dump truck, but, you know, college kids got maybe time, so, and again, advertising, I'm sure there could be somebody that'd be around that would be interested in it.
Thank you.
Tiffany Schumacher, she painted stuff and pulled weeds.
Say that again, Don.
Tiffany Schumacher did.
Tiffany Schumacher worked for the city, she painted...
And there may be a lot of live cards ready for a job, if there can be live cards. So, yeah, I mean, it's not that we're not gonna advertise, it's just that these people we know are already. So, I put names down as they came in, I just told you. I want them to fill out an application, just because that's what we need to do, get it on the bomb, they gotta sign all the work for their paychecks and stuff, but we can put them in. In the paper, we can put it on the website, and we can put it on our Facebook and everything else. We're not showing any publicity in the whole thing. Okay, anybody see anything on the address that we need to?
Community garden.
Community garden. We talked briefly about a flat seat, and that would cover their water. And everything, they'd, they'd be responsible for their plot, their hoses, everything. They're already laid out, they're approximately what, what?
They're approximately about 15 feet wide and 49 long.
And then there's three foot between them, so they can walk down between them around.
Did you use them last year?
No. We didn't, we didn't have any really, um...
Nobody applied for it?
Well, that was late, it was time to decide what I was doing.
Has anybody come forward this year?
Yeah, yeah, there's three, yeah.
We got three.
And I, I think that if we, if we...
And then we needed to, we do too, just to...
And some are also asking about it, but they want to know the cost. They want to know the cost, so that's why we need to settle that. We pay, right, we're charged on $6 for a thousand gallon of water. So, I, we kind of kicked around maybe $25 fee, that's at six, that's, see, 4,000 gallons would be $25. Right, four times six would be 24.
Each one of these spots are gonna have their own hydrant?
No, if Tim gets to town where the gardens are, that tree, or that fence where Bob Evans' property starts, at the end of that fence, they're not very far from the main, and they're gonna put a hydrant there, one hydrant, with a lock on it, so that it can be locked, people that get the rental will get a key, so that we don't have the hydrants turned off at night. Issues of that. That's one of those, lock the barn door before the horse gets out.
The bad part of summer is that everybody's gonna need water at the same time.
It's all going right there in that garden, it's all there.
But, you know, one hydrant, I mean...
Well, we can put split or something, or any hose.
I think we can try just do one hydrant this year, and, and I actually have a, a line for my own, that I'm not gonna worry about, you know, so we two, because we potentially did that, but I think for the first year...
And we're not gonna want them to run it all night and stuff, so...
Most people that garden aren't real rude and irritable, but if they are, there's rules for that, too.
We'll set Jonathan in there.
I, I like the idea of the garden, but then I did a lot of walking last summer in the schools at cornfield right there, and I saw a lot of years of corn laying on the sidewalk, eating, half-eating. And so, there's traffic down that sidewalk, and it's right by the gardeners.
Well, we'll just have to hope, I guess, it's just not, we're gonna try.
Whoa, we'll put...
We'll put cameras on it, too?
We'll put some bear traps in there.
They don't need enough cameras, if you're going to, taking cameras and making money.
Can't you put a steel post and some fencing along the sidewalks, or if people, if people walk through a garden, these kids don't care? They don't know what a garden is, some of them don't.
Let's give everybody in Crofton the benefit of the doubt.
Okay.
Let's try, let's see. Is, is 25 bucks okay with everybody, as far as you know? Vote to it, motion, somebody motion for $25 fee?
I'll make a motion to charge $25 this year.
Arlene makes a motion, second?
I'll second.
Isla, second, Larry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Eileen? Arlene?
Yes.
And I?
Yes.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Well, before that, I got, I got something to ask before, before we do this. They, they had a water break up there in front of the telephone company, is that right, Gomer? Well, we didn't hit it, did we?
No.
Did they, they, did they call Digger's hotline?
No.
It was on whose side? It was?
Their bank.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, that was my concern.
There's no building permit, no calling 811, so they don't...
Yeah, that's, that's fine, you know.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. What about number nine?
Give them the calendar.
Did you call number nine?
We're going to see, I'll see, uh...
Number nine, the service water control?
Thank you, dear. Yeah.
Oh, I don't have that on my agenda. So, yes, I have an old version.
You have one? Do you have that one? Nope. Nope.
I don't have one.
You don't mind, so you don't know what you're...
Okay, so eight and nine, eight and nine, I missed, thanks. So, okay, so nine is the action on the plan for service water, there's, um, I asked Nick, actually, was in with the, the break up there today, you know, and they're gonna run concrete there. If you look at the post office, there's that underground tube, you know, with the grate, like you, what do you call it?
Right, right, for, on our house?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just run it up near...
It's, it's a lava grate spot under it.
It's a down spot, so it don't come over the sidewalk.
We have a thing that goes under there.
Okay, so there's one at the post office, and I asked Nick if they'd look in, put them all up there, make sure where that water goes. Mike Chase and I walked all the way through from the implement company, all the way through up that alley, and that water all comes coming out this. And there's rib, there's, you know, ditches this deep where it comes down away from Peoples', groceries, and it kind of cuts off the edge of Wendy's, and then it comes on over and catches Ricks, and then, you know, it never does get to the street. So, Wendy's was coming that way, too, and they put a, a line on that, so that it gets out to the street. But we don't want a lot of water running across the street, and I doubt that, you know, you want it under. So, we walked on down, and all the way down here at the implement company, and, and by the bank stuff, they've got those underneath the side.
I put that one in the bank in the alley there, because it's Hamilton Fell, that comes off the land on the east side by the alley, and I stuck it underground, and it came out the roof. But, but the bank on the east end, that... Are you talking about the curb?
Yeah, I guess.
I'm not talking about...
They're, they're, they're on this side.
Okay, I'm not talking about...
And, and there is, we want as much coming this way, and then getting into the street where it comes down, goes into Stormsour, and it's gone. So, I don't know the best procedure here, but we talked to the maintenance, and we talked, and Mike Chase and I, we were gonna talk about if we needed to get somebody, like an engineer, to come in and look at the slope and stuff, but after we walked through there, said, if people's, theirs come, if they come straight down and dump it, and then they've got little burns, so that it goes across the road now, and that one that has no rain gutters and stuff on it. So, everything's going right in past that, that's not a parking lot, because it's full of water, I'm talking. So, if we can get them to just go along their building, and I asked the guys if they could cut into the concrete and put those underground, then if we put three in there, one by the Peoples', and one by Ricks', because those alleys break it up, so you can't, and then one over there by, by the beauty shop, then maybe we could stand the cost of cutting the cement and putting it in, and then they can get their water to there, and then they're out there, and then we don't have that drainage. and putting it in, and then they can get their water to there, and then they're out there, and then we don't have that drainage going on back and forth on each other, cutting the alley open. The semi was trying to get through there, they were, it was raining, they can't get through. And maybe they don't need to, but, but that's where they want to go. And then when they get up there and turn, then all that comes down. You know, and then we need to probably just grade the alley, so that it keeps it from coming from the east side over. So that's just kind of what we're looking at, and want you to think about it, talk about it, help decide about it, but number one, do we want to put some city funds in, two, trying to get under that sidewalk.
There is another one too, by the, well, it used to be the old corner drug and the senior center.
Yeah.
That's, that's a dangerous one there too. Weble House, I think he had them work on that, but I don't know if he's got to stop from coming across that sidewalk.
But if it's on your, coming off your building, like the senior centers, or the, where Rod Weble House has got his building, that drain comes back in.
That's the one, that's the building that's coming off.
If, if it's their building and the downspout's coming on, going, it's their responsibility to cut into the sidewalk and get the water to the curb.
On, on that side too. It's all of them zoning, it's their side.
It's a grocery store to, you know, his and Wendy's, and everybody's stuff that water trying to, and what is the answer, the semi comes back there, that was never made for a semi to go back there, which I know it years ago.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying it's not, you know, the water's cutting everything through there and, and going from one person to another, when they should just handle their own water, to get it.
They should, they should.
So what I'm asking is, maybe you want to think about it for a while, but what I'm asking is, do you want to donate the guys' time to cut the concrete open if they buy all the supplies and put that in there? And then, and then we can insist that they get their water to it? Or maybe we can get some.
Well, that probably has to be done after the armor coating, sounds like the armor coating's gotta be done first, and you gotta have a lot of help to do that. If they're gonna do armor coating, I'd like to see them just strictly do that unless we have an emergency. You know what I'm saying?
For the armor coating.
On the, on the streets, they just talked about, have to have next to a few guys get this thing done, on the streets.
Well, we're gonna do more than armor coating, Larry, I think you misunderstood that, we're not gonna spend all summer just armor coating. We want to do a major intersection, that, we got a one and six-year plan that the engineers put out. It's been the same plan for six years and nothing's ever been done.
I know that.
So we'd like to get the road that goes to the softball complex, there's two bad intersections, we'd like to get those torn up and fixed. This side. So we'd like a good road going down there, for sure. Okay, so that's what that's about, so I guess you can think about it, talk about it. Thank you, ma'am. Now I'll take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
By Don, a motion to adjourn, second by Isla.
Oh, Arlene.
Arlene? Isla, vote?
Yes.
And, and Arlene, vote?
Yes.
And Don?
Yes.
And Larry?